For information's sake, we do have Ms. Donner has been approved to attend via electronic communication from Turkey where her family is on vacation. So, thank you for being with us, Ms. Donner. Can we have a board member certify closed session for us, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law that only such public meetings as were identified, public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Fowler?
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Hunley, is there a second on the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Fowler?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. With that, we'll move right into our announcements, the superintents report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to start this afternoon by addressing the recent vote by the James City County Board of Supervisors to terminate the contract for the joint operations of the school division between James City County and the city of Williamsburg. The action last week leaves many questions, and I want to assure our community of our continued commitment to maintain regular contact with city and county officials as decisions are made, our commitment to update families and staff regularly, and to deliver top-quality education for all students, no matter what our future and structure may look like. We will successfully navigate all potential change together and continue to meet the needs of our students, families, and community as we have been entrusted to do since 1955. Another wonderful summer school session is in the books. Over the course of the past several weeks, nearly 1,000 students were engaged in learning and fun. In addition to instruction focused on core academic skills, students at the elementary level enhanced literacy skills through programs provided by our partners from the Williamsburg Regional Library and learned fun ways to stay active thanks to the SHIP program. Middle school students in seventh and eighth grade English Language Arts took a field trip to New York thanks to virtual reality glasses to explore the setting of a book that they had read. But the highlight for all summer middle school students was making homemade ice cream. High school offered opportunities for students to recover credits and earn initial credits. 179 initial credits were earned through a variety of courses, including English 12, government, economics, and personal finance. 304 course credits were recovered by 138 students. And last week, we celebrated eight summer graduates. Summer school would not be possible without our dedicated staff. I want to give a special thanks to our teachers who came together from across the division to collaborate with one another and offer whole group, small group, and one-on-one instruction to support all of our students' needs. I also want to give Williamsburg Regional Library an extra shout-out as representatives made special visits to our summer school sites to gift a new book to our students. It was really exciting to see students carefully choosing a book to take home and call their own. Last week, our administrative team was joined by leaders from Newport News and New Kent to learn alongside three experts in the education field, Doctors Doug Reeves, Cedric Gray, and Stuart Ablong. We discussed the three pillars of student success: attendance, behavior, and academic achievement, and look forward to applying their work to enhance outcomes in this coming school year. And finally, our leadership team spent last week serving the community outside of our school walls. Year two of our WJCC leadership gives back was filled with opportunities like cleaning up and caring for outdoor spaces at Waller Mill Park and the Capitol Trail, packaging and distributing food at the House of Mercy, packing dental care kits for the Lackey Free Clinic, supporting bowling night with the Ark of Williamsburg, and so much more. Through these and other opportunities, our team volunteered more than 200 hours at our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any board member reports?
Yes, I just have one. Last month, I went to the National School Board Association, held a forum in Richmond, and what happens is, like, we'll have presenters. So, the Teacher of the Year was there, and she was our keynote speaker. And then we had breakout groups. And so, I just wanted to say that I attended one on Chesterfields Recovery Academy, and that's an academy they team up with other school divisions for children that may have addictions that still need to graduate and continue to go to school, so they're able to go to a center and get their credits. And the other one I went to was on just how to help with attendance, and they shared lots of great ideas that another school system is doing. So, I'll be sharing those with the board as well. And then the last thing I went to was called Sources of Strength, and it was guidance counselors and students that were in Fluvana County have all these great activities that the students have taken control over to help their classmates just to deal with suicide prevention. And so, there were just a lot of great ideas that I look forward to sharing with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any other reports from the board?
From my part, considering the action by the County Board of Supervisors and the ramifications and implications for our school division, just want to say that, yeah, while it took many of us by surprise, I'm not concerned. I look around this room, not just at our board, but at the senior leadership staff here, and it's a strong division, and it will remain a strong division as long as it is WJCC. So, I'm encouraged by the board as well here. This is a, it has been a strong board, a unified board on many topics, and I know that we can navigate these kind of uncertain waters too in the next few months. So, I'm also encouraged that our counterparts at the city and county are willing to come together and meet, and I think we're looking forward to a date where we can meet with our city and county counterparts and discuss next steps and how those can be achieved. So, anyway, there are good things ahead, even though same things seem to be a little uncertain, and I'm thankful for the leadership represented in this room. Move on to item five, our proposed agenda items. Dr. Heron, item five-one, review fiscal year '25 budget calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing, our CFO, was not able to be here this evening due to a family matter, so we're pleased to welcome Mrs. Bowen, who's going to present the budget calendar for next year. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. For your consideration this evening is the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 2025. The timeline stays the same from year to year with the CIP process beginning in October and ending in December, then the operating budget process starting in January and ending in May. Some of the key dates in this process are the presentation of the CIP Committee Recommendations on October 3rd, presentation of the superintendent's proposed CIP on November 14th, a joint meeting with the James City County Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City Council about the CIP on December 1st, and the school board adoption of the capital improvement plan on December 12th. Then, in January, we'll move into the development of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget. We are again proposing budget workshops prior to the regular January board meetings, with the first meeting proposed to be held on Thursday, January 4th, since we will return from winter break on Wednesday, January 3rd. February 20th will be the initial presentation of the superintendent's proposed operating budget. A joint meeting with the James City County Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City Council is proposed for March 15th, and on March 19th will be the board, with the school board's approval of the operating budget in order to forward to our funding partners on April 1st. And then on May 21st will be the projected date of adoption of the operating budget after receiving funding information back from James City County and the city of Williamsburg. The proposed calendar with dates is attached to the agenda item for your review, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on this proposed calendar? No concerns? Fantastic. Great. Thank you so much. All right, item five-two, review authorization to permit, authorization, excuse me, to permit city-county use of school buses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is actually on vacation this week, so Mr. Kiefer is going to bring this annual item to the board this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, members of the board. This item in front of you this evening is an annual item that we bring forward which provides authorization based on state code for the city of Williamsburg and/or James City County to work with our transportation team if, in the event that bus or transportation service was needed. Happy to answer questions about it. Those entities would pay for the services accordingly.
We see this year after year?
Sir.
Has this ever come to play?
Rarely.
That's my question. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll be prepared to support that. Item five-three, a review of the 2324 CNS food and consumables purchase.
Mr. Chair, again, Mr. Snipes is not here, so Mr. Kiefer, I believe, is presenting this item. Ms. Haley?
Ms. Haley is not able to join us this evening.
Okay. Listen to her.
Nevertheless, I'm happy to talk about the agenda item. It is a, in essence, a renewal of our contract which is rolling relative to consumable items. You may recall that we bring this forward, again, generally on an annual basis based on when the contracts move forward. Because of the amount we bring it to you this evening, because the contract amount over the course of the five years touches the thresholds that need your approval.
And that threshold is over 100,000?
Yes, sir.
Items we're looking at are Hershey frozen treats, to be specific, pet milk, and Trident beverages. Any questions, concerns on these consumables? Okay. Ms. Ortigo?
Does this change in the amounts from what is usual?
It is not, but it's the way the contract rolls and when we join into the contract. So, because of the amount of time within the contract itself, the cumulative dollar amount is something that you need to be able to approve.
So, Ms. Ortigo, this comes every year. There's different items on the list. Depends when that contract is coming up. So, it won't be Hershey next year. It'll be something else. Whatever's running needs reapproved on the five-year approval.
But we're not making a huge jump in?
No, ma'am.
We aren't.
Okay.
It is interesting to note that we spend 1.5 million on milk.
A very healthy product, Mrs. Hummel.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Yes, sir.
Our final proposed item, review request for proposal 20240143, special education-related services.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. This evening, Dr. Brown is going to bring this item to us. As you're well aware, we've had some challenges in hiring special education staff, and we're looking forward to bringing a request for proposal with some ideas for staffing those positions in the incoming year. Dr. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. The intent and purpose of this request for proposal is to solicit through competitive negotiations for special education-related services for WJCC students to address staff openings in specific areas. WJCC currently contracts for four speech-language pathologists, but the current contract does not specifically identify other areas of need for special education services. Qualified vendors for this RFP will provide certified speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, special education teachers, and other special education service providers as needed to address student IP requirements. It is our intent to award this contract to multiple contractors. Contracts resulting from the solicitation shall be for an initial one-year with the option to renew for nine additional one-year renewal periods. Existing school and any new schools that may be built during this term of contract shall be served by the successful offers. RFP closes on August 18th, 2023, and this committee will convene after that date, and I intend to bring qualified vendors to the September 5th, 2023 board meeting for your consideration and action. And at this time, I'm able to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Excuse me, Dr. Brown? Ms. Ortigo?
Maybe more for Dr. Heron. How will this affect, will this affect our current vacancy number?
It should, and as you know, we're continuing to hire on a daily basis. So, the more we hire, the less need we'll have for this service. However, you know, sometimes with people who are unavailable during the year for various reasons, and we'll be able to reach out to these vendors to fill those slots. When a position is empty, then we're not paying for that position generally, and that's where some of the funds will come for the services.
So, if we, if we were to, which, you know, I know is the goal, to be fully staffed by the start of the school year, is this service still necessary?
Yes, it would be, especially for speech-language pathologists. There are some that we already contract with and have for a number of years that we are unable to hire in our system. So, it's broader than just teachers. But, Dr. Brown, I don't know if you have more information on that?
Yeah, historically, I'd say historically, over my time in the past two years, the focus of the contracted services has been in speech and occupational therapy to fill those staffing needs. In the event that we're able to fill all speech-language pathologist vacancies, we wouldn't have the need for contracted services. But that's been our primary focus. However, I think that this will allow us to look at other options if other staffing vacancies aren't filled, so.
I think the significant thing is the timing. If the contract's in place, it allows us to reach out to fill the needs so that students are getting their required services.
So, we could have the contract and not utilize it?
Absolutely.
I see.
Great questions. Any others for Dr. Heron or Dr. Brown? Save mine for an SBQ. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Just have curiosities about, I'll save it for an SBQ.
Now, we all want to know.
That's right.
Might not be appropriate. All right, we'll move on to policies. Item six-one, review revisions to JHCD administering medication to students.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kiefer is going to take us through the various policies tonight, and staff are here to support the process as well.
Thank you. Good evening. Six point zero one is a suggested revision to policy JHCD administering medication to students. You may recall that we last revised this policy in October of '22. Since that time, we have, based on state code revision, are bringing forward a suggested revision that would allow us to be able to provide naloxone to students with suspected overdoses. There's a training component for nurses and health professionals. We have taken our time with adopting this as an organization and have worked regionally to better sort out who's doing what and how they're handling it. But we're bringing it forward to you at this point because we feel like it's the right direction to go.
Mr. Kiefer, would this medication be locked in a protective storage?
Correct. It would be in protective storage. Why don't I let Ms. Fowler, who's here with us, answer some of those technical pieces?
Yes, once we order the naloxone, we will probably be using, if this is approved, the nasal spray naloxone. The nurses are receiving training on a program called Revive that is a certified program so that we will be able to use this. And then it has to be stored in the clinic, and principals will need to know, and any medical designees will need to know where it's located so they can access it. I envision if the nurse is there, they will probably keep it on their person in case there is an emergency and they have to run to address the issue. But otherwise, it would be locked in the clinic.
This will include elementary as well in case the young student gets into something.
Elementary through high school, yes.
Any other questions on this policy item? Okay. Thank you. Item six-two, revisions to JJAC, student-athlete concussions.
Yes, sir. I'm going to kind of speak to all three of these particular policies. I'll handle them in the order that they're listed. Similarly, Mr. Ottstadt is here to potentially answer questions that we have. And the first one is about student-athlete concussions during extracurricular activities. This particular policy, along with the other two that we're bringing forward, are to be reviewed, updated, edited every two years by the school board. You'll recall that almost all of our other policies are on an expected five-year rotation. These three would fall into a two-year rotation. So, strategically, we wanted to bring all of these together this evening so that we get on a general, a general rotation of those and bringing those forward. So, in particular, the one on concussions, the edits that you see are really related to our trimming the policy and taking the additional verbiage and including that in our process and procedures, which is available in the student handbook or the student athletic handbook and covered with coaches. So, our intent here is to streamline the policy with the specifics that are necessary to meet the requirements, but then also have the corresponding, I don't want to say guts, but the corresponding language of the policy itself would be incorporated into our student athletic handbook and covered with student, athletes, parents, and coaches prior to the start of each season. Substantively, there are not changes to how we are handling things.
All right, so we see a good bit of information removed from JJAC for policy governing concussions with a new blanket statement, and then the creation of a policy over sudden cardiac arrest and sudden heat illness prevention. Do we all see those? Any concerns about the creation of those new policies? Okay. All right. We'll move on then. Thank you to, let's see, GBI, staff gifts and solicitations.
Yes, sir. GBI was last revised in 2018. We are recommending just some very modest revisions in order to more closely align with some of our other policies that we have recently updated and revised. But content-wise, we're not making any suggested revisions.
Any cross-references?
Yes, sir.
And finally, GCBCA Employee Assistance Program.
Yes, sir. This, not dissimilar to the one I just discussed, is up for review, and we feel like there is a sentence that we should add related to where an employee may be able to find information about the Employee Assistance Program. So, that's line 10 indicating that that is available through the Human Resources. There's an update in terms of a cross-reference and some capitalization changes.
I think those are great additions to this policy. Added transparency. All right, I think we're good there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda for the evening. If I can have a motion to approve these 16 items, which are the minutes from the July 11th meeting. Seven-two, approval of revisions to policy DA. Approval of revisions to policy DB. Approval of revisions to policy D, excuse me, DGC. Item seven-five, approval of revisions to policy DI. Seven-six, approval of revisions to policy DN. Item seven-seven, approval of revisions to policy EB. I should stop here. Does anybody need me to read out the names of these policies? We're good tracking? Okay. Item seven-eight, approval of revisions to policy EBAA. Seven-nine, approval of revisions to policy EC. Seven-ten, approval of revisions to policy ECA. Seven-eleven, approval of revisions to policy EAA, EEA. Seven-twelve, approval of revisions to policy EEAB. Seven-thirteen, approval of review of policy EEAC. No revisions or additions to that. Item seven-fourteen, approval of revisions to policy EF. Seven-fifteen, approval of retirement of KJE. And finally, seven-sixteen, approval of retirement of policy KMF. Is there a motion for the consent agenda as read?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ortigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. And Ms. Fowler?
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. All right. To our action items on the evening, if I can have a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I make a move, I move that we, the board approves the personnel actions as presented tonight.
Dr. Beers, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And Ms. Fowler?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. I want to say a thank you to Mr. Baker with all the hard work that you and the staff have put towards reducing our, our hiring. What am I trying to say? Hiring in these short days leading up to the return to school. And you almost had one more this evening that we could have added, but we look forward to continuing these actions in our next meeting. Item eight-two, if I can have a motion to approve authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the authorization of Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Daniel Kiefer, Deputy Superintendent, and Mr. Shawn Walker, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August 15th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Hummel. Ms. Hummel, thank you for the second. No discussion on this item. We'll move on to the roll call. Ms. Fowler?
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item eight-three, approval of tuition rates for non-resident students for 2324 school year. Is there a motion?
I move to approve tuition rates for non-resident students for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any further clarification on this item needed before we take it up? Ms. Fowler?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item eight-four, is there a motion to approve revisions to policy JN Appendix A, which is the student fee schedule for 2324 school year?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revisions to policy JN Appendix A, student fee schedule for school year 2023-24 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ortigo. May I have a second?
Second.
Was that Ms. Hunley? Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Looking around. No comments, questions? Ms. Fowler?
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
And can I have a motion to approve revisions to policy IIAC, library material selection and adoption?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revisions of policy IIAC, library material selection and adoption as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Ortigo?
Thank you. I would, I would like to revisit this item, especially with regard to the discussion we began last week, or two weeks ago, where we were trying to parse out the difference between instructional material and educational material. And I would like to have a discussion with this board on the fact that I do think it's within the board's purview to determine what is instructional material. material and, um, I'd like to have that conversation with my, with my colleagues. I understand the distinction between something that is assigned and compulsory and something that is in a library at large. I also understand, um, and support the need to have, um, many different types of books that have all kinds of information and different points of view and, and a broad range of perspectives. Um, and I think that one thing that we are, what, what we're really talking about in this situation where we are changing the review process as it's been, um, utilized so far in taking out, um, any kind of review and appeal process and stating that in a regulation e- even versus a policy, um, I think that we, we need to have a conversation and specifically around the, the item that has been a concern in our community, which is the extreme sexually explicit content that is in some books. Um, and short of, short of having, i- if we're not going to have a review process, then we, I would advocate that we need to have some specific guidelines and upfront because the best way to avoid a complaint and a review, if that's what we would like to, to avoid, is to have clear guidelines upfront so that we don't get to that point. Um, I, um, based on last, uh, the last meeting's conversation, it seemed like everything hinged on the term instructional material. And I, um, I just want to point out a few things. One, I've already stated that the superintendent's memo that was cited, the, for the VDOE superintendent's memo, um, did say that library materials are not required to be instructional material, but it did not preclude them from being considered instructional materials. In our own policy manual, this obviously falls under instruction as stated right on the top of the policy, it does say instruction. Um, and so if we're going to have a separate category of educational materials, do we then, I'm posing a question to, to my colleagues, do we need a separate policy or policy category on educational materials? And yeah, then I would also like to point out that there are times where, especially if you look at elementary school, there is a whole three-subject called library where students are compelled to go into the library and check out a book, I think, often. Um, so that, that would fall under instruction as far as I can tell. So in our, um, the IIA, in IIA regulation, it spelled out the definition of instructional materials and it does state that, um, materials are considered instruct- library materials are considered instructional when they are used to complete an assignment. So we couldn't, even under this definition, if we call them educational, we could never say that all library books are always only educational, they are sometimes instructional if they are utilized to complete an assignment. Furthermore, in our KLB policy, the language cites materials and it does not distinguish between instructional or educational, it just says that there, describes the, the process for complaint form materials and it does not distinguish. So for this reason, I feel like we are not ready to, I just think this needs more work and a little more consideration. It's not that I have a problem with the language of the policy per se, but I, I think that we might need to think through some front-end guidelines a little bit more, so that would be my, my appeal to my board colleagues. So I'll, I'll leave it at that and see what, how people respond.
A- any other comments, responses to Ms. Ortega? Was that you, Ms. Young?
Oh, I thought you were saying Ms. Ortega, I'm sorry. Yes, um, one of the things that, when we had our discussion, uh, recently about sexually explicit materials, um, I've recently gone back through, um, the guidance that we receive from the Virginia Department of Education where it talks about model policies concerning instructional materials with sexually explicit m- content. And then if you go down further into terminology, it talks about, and she's already touched on it, about the use of, uh, library materials for instruction, uh, because there may be assignments where students are sent to the library. I certainly used to do that as a teacher, have my kids go to the library and use the books in, in there. And although I do understand that most students nowadays probably don't use the library, I s- I do agree that there still needs to be some guidance as what kind of materials there, uh, can be used in. I'm not for, um, having things taken off the shelf, but I am for, um, making sure that we're following the, the, the things that are listed in the code, Virginia Code, Section two-point-two dash two-eight-two-seven, about sexually explicit materials being in our library. And, um, because I do think that that comes, I mean, children can be exposed to things, um, without knowing that it's going to be there, but then that goes back to, uh, what is stated in our policy about our library and, um, our librarians, um, choosing books and, can you, Mr. Kiefer, can you go more in, I, more into how those books are selected? Are they, um, I just remember our librarians at the beginning of the year getting huge sacks of books. I mean, because once the funding is there, you want to spend it. How, um, how are those decisions made about which books, are they just taken from a list? I mean, can you elaborate on that?
I can, and I'll, I'll also ask Kristen Barr to join me as, as we go through this. And in response to your question, Ms. Young, I, I think the first thing that I would point to is that within the policy revision that came forward to the committee and that, that we're bringing forward administratively, we actually added a sentence about the, the responsibility for making the selection process. Ergo, we even indicated that, that ultimately the school principal and librarian are, are responsible for the selection piece. The regulation that is being proposed or the regulation revision based on the, the policy as drafted details, uh, more specific, um, expectations for the library staff when it comes to making book selections. The current regulation, um, i- i- is not as specific and not as detailed with respect to how librarians are supposed to go about that process to make those selections. And we felt like putting tighter parameters around that was the appropriate course to take, um, to the point where, um, currently or in, in previous iterations of making library selections, a librarian could, when money was available, submit an order that was, um, for particular books off of a particular reading list or based on interest within the school or genres. We are now indicating that that librarian needs to work with additional colleagues to vet that list so that there is some sense of consensus across the leveled schools as to whether or not a book is appropriate or a genre is appropriate. Further, we've put the principal into that process as well. The, the detailing of the regulation, we feel like puts tighter parameters around that. And then ultimately, the idea that a parent at any point can opt his or her child out of a specific book or set of books is something that is in place and something that we feel like parents ought to be able to do. So that was a, kind of a long-winded response to your question, but I wanted to, to try to hit all the pieces.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, in, in regard to one thing that you just got through discussing about the parent, the parent portion of the regulation, which, um, is very specific and it does go along with code, Virginia code that, um, in this guideline here. My, my question is, how are we going to, uh, alert parents or notify parents, um, that there is an option for them as a parent to opt students out of, out of certain books in the library?
That's a great question, and, and right now on our back-to-school page, on the far right-hand side, there is a link to both in English and in Spanish, a version of the form where a parent could print the form and make a specific designation for opt-out. I think what I shared in the last meeting was that that, that same process was in place last year. We did, we did have a parent of, across the entire school, a single parent across the entire school division make that selection and opt a student out of a book or books. We will, uh, do our best to highlight the fact that that option is available to parents.
Can, can that, um, you said that you're going to do your best to make that, um, that option available, uh, is there a possibility that that could be put on the website of each of our schools? So as parents look at that, they, they know that it's available and I think it should be highlighted because I think a lot of parents aren't, aren't aware of that. And I forgot what else I was going to say about that, but I, for, for me, that whole section that is in, um, that comes from the Vir- Virginia Department of Education, I think has been very well addressed in the regulation and I think it would be very appropriate to make sure that our parents are ve- very aware that it's there, so.
Yeah, believe Ms., believe Ms. Young in the beginning of school packet, it's, it's actually a link in that packet that parents can go directly to it. So we are, we do communicate, make it, communicate it and make it aware. Ms. Wall, maybe you could just, uh, help a little bit of, of understanding of how parents can find it, access it, and how we're trying to make it really obvious and readily available?
Yeah, absolutely, hi, Ms. Young. Um, so right now, the, the back-to-school page that Mr. Kiefer referenced is linked on all of the school homepages as well as division homepage. There's a, an icon that says back to school and by clicking on that, you'll see not only that form as he referenced, but several other forms that are provided to families at the beginning of the school year. We also have, as Dr. Heron referenced, the, um, parent acknowledgement form and that's a, um, a memo that goes out to all parents via email, um, and is also a pop-up message on ParentView, so the first time that a parent logs into ParentView, they'll see that message come up and it lists, as was mentioned, all of the variety of forms and resources that are available to parents. So in order to see their child's schedule and class assignments, they need to acknowledge that they've seen that as well before they can get into the other layers of View. Just today, our first family newsletter for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year went out and that back-to-school page was linked within that email and we will, um, repeat that again, I believe, two weeks from Friday is our next scheduled family newsletter.
Okay, I did remember my other point. One of the things that, um, Dr. Heron, you had mentioned that books in the library that contain sexually explicit material were going to be separated from, was that something that you had mentioned at another board meeting?
I don't, I don't believe we are intending to separate, I think they were putting an emphasis on parent choice. Every parent can, can look at our catalog, look at what's there, they can look at the lists that, where people say some books shouldn't be available and they, they have total access to everything and then they can fill in, eh, fill in this form and restrict their child from having access to it.
I want to, for a moment, go back to this policy, um, that we're discussing, IIAC, and, um, maybe clarify, uh, I think the concern that Ms. Ortega has raised in that, um, library materials are not, uh, from the division staff being considered instructional materials and as such, um, based on KLB, would not have a, uh, formal review process, right? I think that's the concern that Ms. Ortega raises, um, though I appreciate, Ms. Young, your, your feedback as well on your questions. I think, Ms. Hunley, did you have?
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to know, just a little more clarity. So when a, when librarians go to, um, make their purchases, I'm assuming they'll get lists of, um, Caldecott winners, New, N- Newberry, things like that. Do the publishers ever indicate to them or is there a step where they would indicate which books may have sexually explicit content in them? Is there, is there something like that in place or not? Because I'm just assuming, for example, one book that we had to look at, when you read the back and the awards and everything, the inside did not reflect what the back of the book said, so.
You're asking if there's, in essence, a rating system?
Yes.
Okay, let me let Ms. Barr address that.
Thank you, there is not a rating system for books and publishers don't do that. However, publishers, as well as Follett, our company that we work with for our library cataloging and such, both make recommendations separately for intended audience and appropriateness for various age levels. Follett has levels of essential, meaning every library should have this, to, um, forgive me, I forget the lower term, but pretty much
Nice to have.
Nice to have.
Right.
Not, not necessary and there are levels in between. So they're able to look at that and say, this is recommended for students of this age level at this central to non-essential level. So they have that information from both the publisher as well as our cataloging company. Um, there is no, it's, it's a different kind of world compared to video or, or movie ratings and things of that nature. It's, it's just not something that's done from publishers at this time, has never been done to my knowledge.
Ms. Hunley?
So you're saying when they're giving you the rating that, uh, might not be whatever, do they give you the reasons why, like when you go to the movie, it'll say, language, sexual
Yes, ma'am, there's often a, a so- short summary of the book and then rationale for their recommendation.
Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, can someone explain to me the hu- the harm in designating library books as instructional materials? Because when, if we look at, um, you know, our, the policies that we just recently did, IIA, we spell out instructional material, um, we have very, very clear policy. As it relates to sexually explicit content, we're not talking about a wider range, we're not talking about, um, the writings of Karl Marx or Anne Frank, I think was, was mentioned in a previous meeting, we're not talking about, um, books that maybe certain religious groups don't approve of or do approve of, we're talking about something very specific and something that we spell out very specifically in other categories. And the only thing that this, that makes this different is that we're not calling these books instructional materials. So can you explain what would be harmful about designating them instructional materials?
May, may I jump in, I've had my hand raised for about
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, let's, let's, we'll, we'll come to you, Ms. Donner, but, uh, we'll let Ms. Ortega get a response here.
I, I would be, uh, I would be hesitant to say that, that harm would be caused, Ms. Ortega, I, I think that the board would need to make a decision relative to, um, the approach of the policy. And, and currently, the approach of the policy, uh, as is currently and then as being recommended change-wise, puts the, the role of the regulation into the superintendent's camp with respect to putting together a procedure for the library collection. I, I think as we go back to the previous meeting and our previous review of a book, I think as an administrative group, and I, I think I mentioned this last time, I th- I think we misapplied KLB in the review process. And, and I, I feel like, uh, based on when the board approved IIA back in December, in terms of the instructional materials piece, the, the books that have been in question this year were, were not for an assignment, they were for student choice in reading. And I, I think we misapplied a process and it was our, um, our concept administratively to recommend that we go back in and fix that misapplication by way of saying, parents should absolutely choose whether or not their student reads a particular book or checks it out from the library, but that we shouldn't necessarily do an appeal process for library books writ large. That, so that, to answer your question.
Just a sec, so, one second, Ms. Donner, Ms. Ortega?
So no harm then, there would be no harm in labeling them instructional materials?
I think you would have to go in and, and change the language of the policy that is currently in place.
Right.
To include library materials as instructional materials.
Well, I think you're, then you're actually going to be talking about two policies.
IIA and KLB.
IIA, which is the one that was referenced where we lay out the definition of instructional materials and that change was related to our review organizationally of information from VDOE on sexually explicit content, so that was the one we did in December. So that, that one would, I think, need to be looked at. I then think you would also need to look at, um, IIAC and then I think there would need to be a discussion around the application of the appeal process within KLB.
Ms. Donner?
Thank you. As I've been listening to the conversation and, you know, the questions, uh, I think my, I, I've actually feel that they're, the way that, by having the library materials as instructional material and not in a separate category of educational material, I think we actually I think we actually walked down the potential path of causing more harm. And my concern is that there are lots of books that are classic books that have sexually explicit material in them. And so if you look at some of Toni Morrison's work, you look at The Kite Runner, there's all sorts of information and and books that do as part of the story have those elements in there. And so I think if you start to then, start to categorize library materials as instructional, we then get down the slope of a long list of classic books that could be challenged and potentially removed from the library. And I have particular concern in the way in which, as I think Mr. Mr. Kiefer just said, how we applied the the wrong policy earlier in the year. Because the way that the current policy is constructed, we had one parent out of, let's say, eleven thousand students, call it roughly four, four thousand, forty-four hundred families, everyone has two point five kids, that was able to make a complaint. And the process is done in such a way that no one is notified that a book is going through a potential review process. And then that book was then, you know, removed from our collection. And so at that point, there is an opportunity for, instead of, you know, one parent having the opportunity to do parent choice and absolutely make a choice for their child, that one parent made a choice for eleven thousand students or if you want to say three thousand high school students, that no other parent had the opportunity to weigh in on. And so I think that there is a real distinction. I I heard Mrs. Ordigo say, well, what if my child has to go into the library because library is part of instructional? But I still think that that, if you're thinking about it that way, if the if the teacher is saying, we're going to go look in an encyclopedia Britannica and we are directing to these books for this particular assignment, that might be, right, that might be part of that instructional curriculum. If it is that, you know, child, go find a book, right, then at that point, that that child's parent can step in and have that conversation on what is and is not appropriate. And I think, you know, as we, and I think we've also brought up for elementary school children, right, you have, you have littles from five-year-olds to, right, almost eleven-year-olds in the building. And so you are going to have a library, particularly at that age, that's going to span a wide variety of things. And I, you know, I can recall, we had Young Miss magazine back in the day, which was for the sixth graders, which wasn't appropriate for me as a second grader. And allowed for my mother and I to have a conversation when I brought that home, that that's not an appropriate magazine. Right, and so it allows for those types of conversations. But then my mother was able to block that one thing and I think that is that parent choice that we're getting. So I'll conclude my remarks here in that I think they should remain as educational. I think the way that the process is set up now, you have one parent that makes a choice for eleven thousand or three thousand other students, which I think is problematic. And there is no way for that, the way that is currently constructed, it is, it is not providing transparency to the community because no one knows that these processes are happening the way it's constructed.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Any others? Ms. Allen?
I would just say that I support our current revision and would like to, if there isn't a whole lot of other discussion about it, call for a vote.
Okay, so we're effectively shutting down discussion?
If there's more discussion, that that's fine, but I guess I'm like, I think we need to call the question at some point. But unless you guys have a lot more information, you wanna seek answers from the administration.
I I just need to ask, are you calling the question or are you asking if there's more discussion?
Is there more discussion?
Ms. Young?
The only thing I would like, which I heard Ms. Ordigo talk about, is the the feeling of the board about. I've heard Ms. Donner, but I would like to hear from each person what their perspective is.
I'll, I'll start by saying, thank you, by saying, I appreciate the the questions from Ms. Ordigo and the semantics, but I I definitely appreciate Dr. Kiefer's explanation of of why we've, we're at this point that we are. It was very frustrating to me when the, there was a complaint that followed a a policy that was the wrong policy. It was the wrong policy. And and so I want to clarify that, so that doesn't happen again. So that we, we don't get ourselves in this situation where we've got a lot of parents concerned about I don't want that book taken out of the library and then other parents saying, I want that book in the library. So I think this is a very good, good policy for just letting the librarians and the building leaders to decide what comes into the library. And then parents have the total control over what their individual child or children can take out of the library. So that's, that's where I stand. I was at Matthew Whaley many years ago when there were parents that, a couple, one or two that thought Harry Potter was promoting witchcraft and they didn't want any witchcraft books in the library. So they wanted to remove all the Harry Potter books. And that's where we can, that's the point where we can get with certain people that have complaints about certain things. And then all of a sudden, you know, you've got a school system somewhere where our Samantha Gorski, what the poet. I mean.
Amanda Gorman.
Amanda, yeah. One parent complained about this wonderful book of poems and it was removed from the library. So that's amount of censorship leads to book banning and it's not, I think it's not what the majority of the parents in W N J C C want for their their school system or their library. So that's, that's my view.
All right, any other comments?
I just would echo. I was almost sad, Wes.
Okay.
Mike.
Yeah, what I, if, you know, we start here and next time it could be books that deal with kids that live in Russia and that's communism and we don't want those in the library. So I, I worry about that slippery slope that Ms. Donner mentioned is if we, if, where do we stop? Where are we gonna stop? We gonna start here and then two years from now, we move into another area or what about L G P? What's gonna happen? Oh, no, we don't want those books in there because they I I just, I really worry about. I'd rather err on that on the other side. I'm gonna err on that, that's a second.
Well, I I appreciate the conversation. I I think this is what we're called to do, to have these discussions, meaningful as they are. For my part, I I've seen K L B over the last few years be implemented, this review process with respect to materials used in the classroom or materials available in the library. And I don't disagree that there seemed to be a bit of a gray area with respect to certain policies and do they extend towards library materials. I think that the state superintendent's memo does shore that up for us. It clears that that gray area up for us. But at the same time, as I look at it, it tells us that instructional materials definitions are made at the local level. And so for that reason, and just that I've seen K L B work and it's it's worked well. It can be, it can be improved upon like anything else that we use. But I've seen a book challenge that had what appeared to be like a half-naked Barbie doll on the cover and it had a suggestive title to it. But when you look at the content of the book, it is something that I would encourage my daughter to read. Written by a well-meaningful, well-intentioned young lady that wants to save, rescue young, young girls that have been placed in a, and that might be placed in a situation that she had experienced. You gotta get past the cover, right, and you gotta get past the the back matter. And I think that's what these, this policy asks the review committees to do, right? Look at the material, whether it be defined as educational or instructional, and consider if this is representative of our community, if this is appropriate for our students at whatever grade level, and then bring that recommendation back. And I like that it, I like that K L B answers that for traditional instructional materials, textbooks and otherwise. I am up for doing the hard work perhaps of relooking at I I A, I I A C, K L B and folding this library materials discussion into that so that we continue to have that level of scrutiny for certain materials that are in our libraries. That's me, that's my take on it. I thought I'd be pithy with it and concise, but that's where I stand. So I'm willing to do the work if the board were willing to do the work with us. I think that we owe it to our community, to our parents, to hold our level, hold our division to a higher level of scrutiny with respect to what is offered, available to students in the libraries.
I I I guess I respectfully disagree with that. I I I think, I think it's really, it's also important to recognize how much time and energy our professional staff has gone into looking at these books, deciding on these books. I don't care what kind of material is, they have far deeper, greater backgrounds to make those decisions that are not gonna be based on emotionally charged kinds of material that that some parents have latched on to. So I, I don't wanna keep working on this. I I I think this, I think this policy stands on its own. And I think the changes that have been made are appropriate. And and we have two policies, one for textbooks and one for books in the library. And I'm, I, I think, I, I, I think the textbook issue that came up in the past was, it was misdirected, misguided. And 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 I disagreed with with the outcome, the initial outcome about that. And and we had, and I received a tremendous number, far more emails from parents who definitely did not want books taken out of the library simply because somebody didn't like the book. Many more than those who said, I want that book removed. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know how good those numbers are, but that's it. As I probably said enough already.
Okay. Do you have a comment, Ms. Ordigo?
A concluding comment. For me, it's, it's two things. One, it's the school board's authority to designate instructional materials. It just is. Second, I am advocating for simply aiding the selection process by inserting very specific limited guidelines on sexually explicit content at the front end, at the, at the selection process. We we already know, based on the standards that are listed in the policy, that librarians and professionals make selections based on a set of standards that is given to them by a number of governing entities.
Just respond to that. Dr. Beers, please.
That is a selection process. That means some things get selected and some things don't. That's not a ban. That's a selection. So simply inserting one additional layer of very specific guidance is just aiding the selection process. It's not banning anything. And the more robust the selection process on the front end, the less need you will have for any kind of review process on the end. And I would hope that things we're selecting would withstand review. We shouldn't be afraid of review. We should welcome it because if we're selecting quality material that can be documented as, as this is why and these are the professionals that chose it, then that should withstand most complaints. So that's, that's my two cents.
All right, we will ask Ms. Aller to, we have a motion to take the roll on this item?
Did everyone want it?
I heard from everyone, I was waiting, I paused.
So I agree with, exactly. I I like that extra little piece as well to know what what they're. I I was just hoping that was gonna happen anyway with our professionals moving forward, that we would look at, just to be sure what we're getting in is quality. Because the same thing that Mr. Dowell said, I read two books. One was deemed, what someone had deemed as pornography and everything else was not. And it was a a book I wanted my, would have my child to read as well. And the other one, I would not. So I like the the fact that a parent has a choice. I was one of those parents that didn't want my son to have certain books and it, because I didn't think they were appropriate. But that was, I liked having that right to say that for my son, but I did not feel I had the right to say that for everyone else's child. But I would like something that just, we just look a little bit more carefully at what types of books are coming in, to make sure that they aren't trash.
Dr. Beers?
See, I, I, I don't, I don't understand that. Part of it is, if we start to do that, then we're gonna start to have a collection of books. Okay, these are the really, really books that that people just don't like. And then it's gonna go down. Well, let's take a look at this book that's coming in. Well, which box does that go in? I don't, I don't want, I don't, I don't want the school library to have to go through every single book that's in the library to see, well, where does this fit on that continuum? And by the way, I got another hundred books coming in.
I wasn't talking about what's already there. I'm just saying, moving forward.
Well, yeah.
Moving forward, I'm not saying what's already there, just moving forward. I am trusting the librarians and the professionals now to do the, you know, pick books.
Honey, just in response to that, if I may, Mr. Chair, the the process at the front end, we've tried. We're making stronger in regulation. One librarian won't choose. They'll actually confer with their professional colleagues. Three librarians will look at specific books. We have the principal input as well. Those are two changes to our upfront, looking at what's appropriate for for students in the library and and taking recommendations from the various lists as well. So we have done intentionally some work at the front end so that we can still maintain parent choice. Parent choice has been a a subject that has been very near and dear to all of our hearts for two years now. And I think it applies to this as well.
Ms. Donner, you have a question? Ms. Donner, you have a question?
I do, and I just wanted to clarify something in trying to understand Ms. Hunley's kind of point. So and and maybe just understand what we're voting on. So if I, if I understand what we're voting on is we're, we're voting on this particular policy which says that the librarians will have tools and criteria. And then, and so that, so that would be the policy that we're voting on. It sounds to me like then there is a separate regulation that has more details around it that explains what those policy or what those parameters are. Am I understanding that correctly? And that is separate from what we're currently voting on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we could vote to uphold this policy and then have another discussion on what the regulation looks like?
We, we won't have any discussions on regulations, no, ma'am.
Okay, so that is something that, once we approve this policy, then the administration then goes and puts in what the regulation would be and how they are going to adjudicate that, understanding some board members' desires around what should be in that regulation.
No, no, ma'am. So the policy is gonna govern the regulation. Irrespective of any discussions or conversations that have been had here, the policy will govern the regulation and staff will then go build a regulation based on policy.
So then is, so is then what Mrs. Hunley and Mrs. Ordigo saying, they want to change the wording of the policy to specifically talk about sexually explicit content? the wording of the policy to specifically talk about sexually explicit content in there? I'm not quite understanding what it is they want written or to change, how do they want to change this particular policy of the wording?
I, I think, um, the lightning, lightning bolt that we're discussing is K L B being stricken from the policy. And K L B governs, um, the review process for instructional materials. And I'll let Ms. Ortego speak again.
That, and the fact that we have language that has stipulations for sexually explicit content under instructional materials, and simply by saying that these are not instructional materials, it, it takes, it takes that oversight out of that category. So that is, to me, that is the semantics. It's, it's creating a new category called educational over which there are no policies.
Are we clear on what we're voting on? Just looking around, I hope that we are. Did that answer your question, Ms. Donner?
So I would say that.
Yes, thank you.
I would say this policy is not, I would, I would, it's not quite robust enough for me to support, so that, that's what I'm going to say.
Okay. One last second for any additional comments or questions. Okay, you lost it.
Okay.
Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
O.
Mrs. Young? Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
No. Okay, we're going to wrap up our board meeting, uh, with board member comments. And as we like to do, we're going to start with our vacationers. Ms. Donner?
Well, I will say, what I love about this board is that we continue to have challenging conversations and challenge each other, um, in a, in a respectful way and asking questions. And so, right, it all just makes the process better. So I, I appreciate each of the board members' points of view and, and how we've moved through this. Um, I also want to say thank you all for making this quite an efficient board meeting, Mr. Chair, uh, since it is now almost one o'clock in the morning.
Wow.
In Greece. But just, yes, thank you, thank you for everyone, and I will zip it.
Right. Uh, Ms. Young, if you're prepared?
Yes, um, yeah. Um, yes, I'm very glad to be back, and, and, uh, Ms. Donner, I'm jealous of the blue waters you're experiencing. Um, but, um, I'm looking forward to the beginning of the school year and for, um, our teachers returning, and I'm very thankful to, to the hard work that, uh, Mr. Baker and his department have done, making sure that we're getting closer and closer to being fully staffed. And, um, I too will make my comments succinct, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hummel?
I also am very excited for the school year to start. Um, it's, we've come a long way in two years. So for me, looking at going into my eighth year, um, knowing that in 2019, there were four of us that signed up for what was, we had no idea what we were signing up for in 2019. And so I feel really comfortable that moving into this year, it's kind of, we're looking at good, positive things coming out of W J C C, um, with, I think we're going to get our teachers back, we're going to be fully staffed, we're going to, uh, address the issues with discipline, we're going to see great stats coming from W J C C, a great learning stride. So I'm feeling very positive about this year. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers?
I'm also feeling very positive, and, and I was especially, um, happy to see the, the kids that took advantage of our summer school programs. Um, it, it's just a, uh, it's another boost for them, um, as they start up in the fall, and, uh, and I look forward to a, a great startup this fall, and, um, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hunley?
Um, yes, I, uh, am grateful that Stonehouse invited me the la- second to the last day of summer school to, um, a ship coordination that they did around the book Lemonade Wars, and the students got to make, um, frozen, um, smoothies. And not only that, they had, uh, math activities going because they had to do measurement, they had to take the word lemonade wars and see how many words they could make from those letters. And, um, it was just a great way to watch learning take place, um, real world. And it was also great to see the graduates, um, the summer graduates, and I don't think we always, um, you know, appreciate, we always think it's how, you know, you end, but it, it's, it's not the start, it was the end for them, and they, they finished strong. And I was pleased that they were able to get their, um, walk across the stage to get their diploma. And, um, also, I would just like to say that, um, as a former educator, um, I, I appreciate and I know what librarians, um, the jobs that they have to do, and I just would like to say, you know, I have trust that they're going to make good decisions moving forward on the best educational, um, readings for our students. Um, I don't think there's anyone out there that's sitting around, look, going to a list to find the most racy things to get into our schools. I believe certain things slip in, and, um, we just have to be more vigilant.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Uh, Ms. Ortego?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of comments tonight. Um, I just can't believe it's August, and we are racing towards the start of, of a new school year. So, um, I just hope everyone enjoys the last weeks of summer, happy, safe, stay cool, and will, uh, rest up for, for the start of the new school year.
Thanks to all the speakers, presenters this evening, and, uh, all the work, uh, that goes on behind the scenes by staff, um, to prepare for these meetings, um, even during the, the summer. I, I get a lot of questions like, is it good to be done to have a break? I'm like, what are you talking about? Meeting next week, there is no break. And nobody knows that more than the, the professionals in this room, the staff. So thank you for all of your work. Um, summer school was a lot of fun, but, um, in particular for me, it was really heartening to see, um, all of the family and friends that came out to support their graduate. That was really cool. It really is a inspiring thing to see, um, the rally around these folks that have, uh, just determined not to quit and, uh, to, to achieve that, that diploma. So that was really cool to see. Um, I want to make sure that we are in agreement on our six policies that we discussed this evening to place those on a consent agenda for the fifteenth. I think we're good for that. Thank you. And we'll look at our next meetings and upcoming events. The policy committee meeting on the eighteenth of August at eight thirty in room one oh eight, uh, at Central Office, and then, um, the much anticipated W J C C Williamsburg James City County Convocation, August twenty-fifth at nine AM, James Blair Middle School. I think that's where we'll be, the board will be, at the library. Um, and I think, uh, all the faculty and staff will, they'll be at their respective
Absolutely.
Schools, buildings.
Yes, sir.
That's exciting. Really looking forward to it. Can't wait to, wait to hear the theme.
Let's come.
Gratitude was fantastic this year. Coming meetings, uh, on the fifteenth of August, we have closed session beginning at five, and then our regular meeting beginning at six thirty. And that regular meeting will be at the James Blair Gymnasium on September fifth, closed session at four, and then our work session on fourth, at four thirty, right back here in, uh, room three hundred of the Central Office, annex. And I think that's it for this evening. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all the work. This meeting's adjourned.